Our Father in Heaven, as we gather this night, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet and to serve our community as a town council. We pray for thy Spirit to guide and direct us in those decisions and discussions that we have. Help us to be able to have clarity and be able to make decisions with the information that is provided. We're grateful for this community. We're grateful for the blessings that we enjoy and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We are happy to have you all here today. It's really great. And we're going to call this meeting to order. It's the ninth of June, 2020, and we having a regular town council meeting. We have in our chambers our two media and we have our reporter for Temple City Star. Thank you so much for being there. And we have also Channel 32 that is represented. Thank you so much. So at this point, we have an addition to the agenda that has been given to me under 7D. And it would be called Homeseekers. And so we need to have a vote on that one first.
I'll make a motion to accept that addition to the agenda.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, the vote is unanimous, so it can be put onto the agenda. And we now have to adopt the agenda.
Adopt the agenda with the addition.
Thank you so much. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so we have a delegation today. You're so hidden by councillor Court here that I could not even recognize you, sorry. We have JD, help me pronounce your name properly.
Heitzma.
Heitzma.
Heitz.
Heitz.
Heitz. Is it Dutch?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, there you go. Now we know everything about you.
Oh, we need to know you're good.
And Mr. Heitzma is our intern and will give you some update or information on Alberta Rural Development Network. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, councillor Selk was at a meeting where he met someone from Alberta Rural Development Network. And as they were talking, some of the things piqued his interest enough to suggest that we look into it to see if there would be some benefit to the town engaging with ARDN and to see what might come. So I've had the opportunity to look into that and here to report my findings. ARDN is an Alberta-based nonprofit organization and they're dedicated to preventing and ending homelessness and supporting communities in addressing their needs for affordable housing. Essentially, they are municipal consultants for this field and they've been doing this for quite some time. Aside from that role, they are also the agent and steward of the funds for the Reaching Home Program, which is the federal government's homelessness reduction and prevention strategy. And so for rural communities in Alberta, the federal government has given them the role of agent to administer those funds for them on their behalf. So the ARDN, they have several initiatives that they engage with. The main initiative or a big initiative is their Sustainable Housing Initiative. And I was able to attend, just due to timing, a webinar that they had last month about that. And what the Sustainable Housing Initiative is, well, first of all, it's sustainable not in the environmental sense, but sustainable in the ongoing sense or akin to being a going concern, housing projects that can sustain themselves. And what this project or what this initiative is, where they have, they work with CMHC and have developed a very extensive program to help municipalities develop proposals. And well, first to develop plans for a housing complex in their area that is affordable to address homelessness and other low-income housing needs. And then they help them to develop a proposal that will get funding. They have a very detailed step-by-step guide so that municipalities who don't have specific resources or expertise in that area can develop a good proposal. And their claim is that through their experience and their network, you know, they've been able to really fine-tune what funders like and want to see in projects and proposals. And that's what they help you to develop. And so that was interesting. One of the things that they really hone in on with their affordable housing projects is the project needs to maintain or be self-contained operationally. And so what that means is they don't find that they're getting funding for projects that are going to require further funding. And the way that they achieve this operational self-sufficiency within projects is by mixing unit types along their housing continuum. And so they'll have a complex that will have social housing, affordable rent housing, and then market rent. And the few market rent units will provide that extra income required to top up the deficiencies that they aren't getting from the lower-rent units so that the project can maintain self-sufficiency. When I went into this webinar, I had in mind the report, the Town's Vagrancy and Mental Health Report or Proposal, that, as you remember, is a report that was done to try and demonstrate what a friendship center could look like in the community that would address the needs of some homeless or vulnerable populations that could be served. And so I brought that forth in some questions to see if they could accommodate things that were a little bit out of the box to what were strictly housing developments. And they do have an appetite for that. However, they find that when they go out of the box, it is more difficult to find funding because funding requirements aren't as flexible. And so while they're interested and open to innovation and they have pursued projects that have a different mix of some commercial areas or some social development quasi-commercial areas within a mix of rental units, they said that that is something that is more complicated and that funding isn't as easy to get for that. And the types of funding that they find through these projects is usually from about three or four sources. One, they aren't fully funded, so the municipality does need to commit to funds. But they do get grants or they are finding that they're getting grants from CMHC. They're getting subsidized loans in the form of low interest or long amortization from the federal or provincial governments. And they all, there are other areas that they can get funding, such as if they build to a certain environmental standard, then there are groups that will give them funding for that. And so their objective is to work with the community to develop a project, to provide guidance on how a project should be developed, to help them create an excellent proposal, and then to really send it out to as many different possible sources of funding to collect as much funds as possible. There's no guarantee for funds, but they try to get as much as possible to reduce the burden on the community for that. So that's their main initiative. However, they do have other initiatives, one being a homelessness estimation initiative. And this is actually something that they're in their second year with or their second phase with. And just as a side note of interest, because they're close to home, the Kynai Nation and Fort McLeod were participants in their first wave of this program. Now, the homeless estimation is basically a one-month-long survey that is administered through service agencies in a community where they try to reach as many people that could be categorized as homeless and basically just survey them and then it gets sent to them. They create a report. They've done this for approximately 18 or so communities in Alberta in their first phase. This is something that the town, that we are interested in pursuing. And their second phase is, the applications for their second phase is closing this month. It's a fairly low-cost opportunity or initiative and it could provide some insightful information as to the situation here in Carstens.
So JD, help me understand, if you don't mind, this is just a survey? This particular initiative is strictly a survey?
Yes.
And a report that comes afterwards to the municipality?
That's right.
And who has the cost for it? Is that shared or?
They have a small amount of funding for it. And what they've said is that what they see is it usually being a 40- to 50-hour commitment from a project coordinator that they would see in the community. So that would be likely a combination of staff or a volunteer. And the survey is given over a period of 30 days. And so that person engages with the people where the survey will be given out. And they suggest that it's given out in all of the service areas or service agencies that are visited by people that could be in that demographic. Once the surveys are gathered, there's a cost to send them to ARDN. And ARDN then does the analysis and sends back a report. There's no cost for that. So the costs are really limited to the man-hours for the coordinator and the shipping, which would be nominal.
All right, so it's about one week's wages, kind of?
That's what they, yeah, that's what they've said.
Okay. Councillor Court?
Just kind of for definition on this survey, are they talking people that come into the town and are homeless? Are they talking about people that are just living in the town? Are we combining our communities as we usually do into one and that would be part of our homeless population? What exactly are they looking for when it comes to definitions?
For sure. Within the survey, they've got a standard of questions, but they are adaptable. And so one of the questions that would be relevant would be, you know, where do you consider home? So that we'd be able to kind of identify where they feel like they're coming from. But the surveys are given out in service agency areas. So for example, people would be able to take the survey when they came into the library. You know, the library is a free service that people can come to. So we don't control where the people live, but they can come and take that survey there if they wanted. When the survey was done in the Kynai Nation last, in their first round, it was at the shelter that people were able to take the survey. Now, it is also up to the community as to where it is given. So people, you know, they say that it's given through the service agencies that people already frequent. But, you know, if there was also a relevant spot that we felt like we could take it or go and even solicit people to fulfill the survey, then that's available also.
Councillor Selk?
Okay. Since I'm the one that attended the meeting, it was the whole homeless survey that I was primarily interested in because I don't think we know. And that was what ARDN was trying to get across, is most communities have no idea what the homeless population looks like in their communities. So that's why we would conduct the survey. And then most communities may or may not have an idea of what sort of resources are available in terms of affordable housing all along that continuum. So I think it helps us at least have information.
Okay, carry on. Councillor Barnes?
So one of the, not so much a concern as a thought. Under the circumstances right now, some of these service agencies aren't, you can't even get into them to take these surveys, like the library, until they're allowed to open and have people actually come in. That won't happen.
Right.
So that has to happen first. So you have to be able to access some of these places. So, you know, I love the idea of having this survey. I think it's a great thing that for our community. But being able to administer it right now is a little bit tough, I think.
There are definitely COVID-19-related issues for that. The application period for this second round is closing at the end of the month. And I wasn't, I didn't ask to see when they were hoping to start and actually engaging with the survey, but it would be some months down the road that that would be developed. There was one other initiative that ARDN was recently in the news for that isn't available to us at this time because they're fairly low on funding, they've said. But in their, through their Reaching Home Program, they just released in the news earlier this year 12 communities where they've done several developments. And it was $3.7 million that was funded. And just also out of note, Fort McLeod received two different sources of funding. And the types of funding that came through that is, in Fort McLeod, there's funding for transitional beds who have completed their detox program. In Slave Lake, there was funding for an emergency shelter mat program and for a friendship center. And through the Alberta, through the Reaching Home Program, they did receive a lot more out-of-the-box type of funding for initiatives. So when more money becomes available to them in that area, then a project that could be described in the way that our Town's Vagrancy and Mental Health Report proposes could be something that that would be more along those lines of. And so having looked at that and what ARDN offers, that's their analysis so far. And so really what administration is looking for now from council is some sort of direction or guidance as to what you'd like moving forward. If you'd like this perhaps to be on a planning agenda item or if there's something more specific in mind that we can receive that direction from you. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. It was very good.
At the Red Deer Conference, I attended the session that was dealing specifically with low-cost housing. And I don't know how many of you else was, went to that. Richard, I think, yeah, went to that. But if I remember, I remember seeing all the information that they're putting out there and it was always, we don't have a lot of funding. But the minimum project started at 12 units. And so it was a multimillion-dollar project and they were going up to 36 units, et cetera, et cetera. And so when I looked at the project they've got out here at Moses Lake, that's a 12-unit place. And that was great. That really helped 12 families. But it was a heavily subsidized project. And so we need to look into how much is a little bit of money before the town, I think, can commit any kind of funding for something of that nature. Because that's a big project and they're not cheap. The only reason that they're low-cost is because it's subsidized. If they were not subsidized, they wouldn't be low-cost because there's no such thing as a low-cost stud. There's no such thing as a low-cost electrical work unless somebody donates a lot of stuff because all those things cost a lot of money. And so when I looked at that project and I come out of there and I took a lot of information on it, this is not cheap, even at a subsidized level. And so the survey is probably the way that we need to go.
Councillor Bangley, councillor Brown?
JD, did the federal government not just recently release $6 billion or something to indigenous housing or indigenous housing?
I'm not aware of that. When I was looking into what the ARDN has available to them and offers, that wasn't brought up. So I can't speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Brown?
No, I was just going to say, I think, it's my understanding JD is just asking for us to, I think it's important that we just say yes to the, let's find out what the homeless situation is here. I think that's the first step before we get to the money, before we get to all of this. I think it's just about, it's a great, it's a great survey to have within our community, to know our numbers. I think that's where we start.
JD, to carry on with what councillor Brown is saying, I'm just interested to know the scope of this study that was made in Moses Lake in this area. Because in speaking with councillor Marcel Whistlehead, he told me that that study has been done and that people who seem to be homeless on our street have been accounted for in that study. So before we duplicate a study, I would like to know what the scope was of that study. I think that is something we would be well to understand.
Yeah, definitely. The study is available to us. It's on their website. I actually was reading it. It's on my computer also. So that's something that we could report on at a later date.
Yeah, that will be a great thing. Thank you. Councillor Selk?
Okay, I think that we're trying to pinpoint one specific group when I think what JD's saying is we're trying to take a broad brush at this and see what our low-cost, affordable housing and homelessness looks like in a broad picture. And let's not just talk about one specific group. There's others that are not, that there isn't affordable housing in this town for a lot of people.
Right. So what you are looking at is really a twofold kind of study. One with homelessness that would be more with the vulnerable on our streets and the other one that is those of low income that need to have some affordable housing, be it rental or being housing per se.
Ding 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 ding, we have a winner.
Okay. All right, so it makes sense. I understand.
If I could just add one thing to that. Within the homelessness estimation, the definition of homelessness isn't strictly someone that you would see on the street, but they use the definition of someone without stable, safe, permanent, appropriate housing or in the position to have the immediate prospects and means to acquire such housing. So it's a broader definition. And the survey, I can't speak to it in detail, but the survey does have quite a lot of parameters to really be able to break down, you know, what type of situation are the people in to give what councillor Selk is alluding to is a more broad view of the situation.
Okay, so if you don't mind me giving you maybe another place where the data was collected. We had done a survey with the seniors at a meeting that they had. And we have some data that is rather interesting as to what they were looking at for housing and the bracket of costs that they could afford. So Jeff, you probably still have that somewhere. So you may want to refer to that and might help you along with that study.
All right.
Councillor Barnes?
It's really interesting because of the nature of my business, I'm a Realtor and I'm always looking at statistics. I'm always looking at articles regarding housing. And low-cost housing has always been an interesting, you know, concept. But about four months ago, there was an article that came across my computer about some of the issues with low-cost housing with Habitat for Humanity, for instance. And that was very specific that, you know, there was lots of praise going out there, but in the background, there's a lot of people that aren't being able to make the grade with the Habitat Humanity. They get into their houses and it's not as low-cost as they think. They've been foreclosed. There's been quite a few people foreclosed on that. And that's supposedly affordable housing, right? And so that might be something that we need to have a look at, at that too. Because, you know, for low-cost housing for one person is high cost for another, even in the low-cost bracket, you know, the low-income bracket. So it might be something worth looking into.
But I think a good study would be worthwhile thing.
Would be the way to go first. I agree with councillor Brown on that.
I really think that, thanks to councillor Selk.
Where do we start?
Yeah.
Under our circumstances.
I appreciate councillor Selk looking into that because it's something we have spoken to at different time on council but never move really forward towards something that materialized. So it might be worthwhile. Thank you so much for your thorough presentation. Much appreciated. All right, now we have Mrs. Myrna Jensen, who's going to come and talk for the Carstens Senior Society and all the good work she did and how much she would like to partner with the town to put the finishing touches.
Okay, I'm just going to start by reading this quick little letter. "We, the members of the board," whoops, mayor and council. I've never done this before.
Thank you. You're doing fine.
We're friendly.
"We, the members of the Board of the Carstens Senior Society, would like to request two or more flower barrels to be placed outside the Tanner Centennial Senior Centre. September 1, 2020 will be the 33rd anniversary of the original opening date of September 1, 1987. We have noticed that there is an abundance of barrels in some areas. We request that two of them could be relocated in front of our building. The flowers will complement the inside facelift and the new electrical upgrade waiting to be placed beside our building. That was done this morning. The upcoming sidewalk repair will enhance and protect against the current tripping hazard. We wish for the Carstens and District seniors and the public at large to realize that we are, will be soon, open for business and that there is someone who cares. This upgrade to the inside Centennial Hall, the hallway and front entry will make the building more appealing as a fresh-looking venue for upcoming weddings, receptions and other events. Thank you for considering placing two flower barrels to beautify the Tanner Centennial Center."
Myrna, thank you very much. But I was interested in the little comment that is in that letter. That said, take two barrels from somewhere and give them to us. I don't know that that could be the only solution. Maybe another solution would be a donation from the town to donate two barrels planted.
Okay, that sounds good.
Senior citizen. Might be something, might be something a little better. I was looking for the barrels and all of a sudden I realized none of the flowers are out yet.
No, but I know they're coming soon.
Okay. So it's rather interesting. Councillor Bangley?
Mrs. Jensen has a little bit more as well.
Okay, please, carry on.
Okay, as of April 2, this has been a great thing for me because the COVID-19 lockdown has everybody, you know, looking for something to do. Well, I have had something to do and it's awesome. Okay, on April 20, we had new blinds installed. It was just like Christmas. It was amazing. That cost us $2,489.13. And because I got on the ball really quick, I was able to get a really good discount. And so I talked them into the fact that because of the discount, we could afford new, we could afford paint to paint the building.
I'm sure you did.
And so they went, well, I even sweetened the deal. I said, I'll do it for free. Just let me have at it. And so they felt kind of funny about that. And so I said, okay, well, make a donation to the preschool playground up there. So they went for that. So anyways, we got the paint. The paint was $1,054.12 and there was a discount on that as well. So before the paint was ordered, they decided that probably the hallway and the entryway needed to be done also. And I said, okay, I can do that. So I've been painting. I've been fixing. There's a table that, you know how the tables are that rock, they won't sit. I fixed the table. So I've been having a lot of fun working in there. And I just would like people to know that there's a big difference in there. You guys should just come and see.
Well, invite us and we shall come.
You are invited. Whenever that dirty, filthy Yukon is there, I am too.
We are very appreciative for all you've done and all your volunteering. It's really amazing when one puts their mind to do. It's really amazing when one puts their mind to do something good for the community, how much it touches people. Thank you so much.
I'm good. I'm glad. I just wanted to make one other comment, that we would truly appreciate some beautification outside in front of the senior center. And I know the grass is cut often and that looks really good, but the seniors really, especially the senior ladies, love flowers. And that would make them so happy.
We shall try to please.
Thank you.
We need to discuss it as a council, as you know.
Yes.
But I don't think that you will find too much resistance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Just a second. There's a question. Councillor Ben-Gree?
I have two questions for you. I hope you changed the pink.
Oh, I did. I am so excited. It's very neutral.
So excited.
Good. A second one.
Dusty rose.
Has there ever been hanging flower baskets outside the front door of the seniors?
Not that I've been aware of. I've been on the board for five years and I have never seen anything there.
There's no post.
There's two lamp posts, but they don't have anything to hang.
So they don't have the hanger apparatus on it?
Hangers on them.
Yeah. What? Pardon me?
You better put some hangers on them.
I'd like to see them sitting on the, right on the ground, a little bit in front of the door, like maybe two or three feet in front of the door on both sides there. That would look so nice.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your hard work.
So I don't have any idea when the baskets are coming, Jeff.
Tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM.
Oh, this is timely, right?
We are, we are just a little bit, well, we might need to...
I'm texting Randy right now to talk about the logistics of what that all means.
Exactly. Thank you, Myrna.
Okay. You're welcome.
Yeah. Timing was perfect. Yeah, I'll call you.
Okay.
Let's see. Take your pick.
All right. That's great.
And you can stay as long as you want.
So we have minutes of May the 26th. It was a regular meeting of council. Councillor Brown?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 26, 2020.
Thank you. Any comments? I saw, I read them and found them to be reflective of our work. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Bylaw and policy under number six. We have the opportunity to consider a second and third reading for bylaw 1643A, Public Safety Bylaw Amendment. And if you remember, this one has to do with enhance, enhancing the tools that our police and officer in town, police officer can use. Councillor South?
I'd like to move a second reading of bylaw 1643A, Public Safety Bylaw Amendment.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? All in favor? Thank you. Since we're doing second, we can do third. We don't need to put anything in between. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, to pass and amend...
To approve third reading?
To approve the amendments on bylaw 1643A, the Public Safety Bylaw Amendment.
Okay. To approve third reading. All right.
Reading, yes, sorry.
All in favor? Thank you very much. So this will now become into effect. Under other business, 7A, councillor Brown, we don't have any background. Maybe you want to enlighten us.
I would love it.
Easy.
Easy. Okay. So Seventh Street, so just so you're all aware, that is the one that goes past the elementary school and it heads on out to the golf course. And so residential, it has a playground zone and then it goes right into the residential. We did put the crosswalk in and we need to thank Jeff's people for that. That was fantastic, having that crosswalk put in. And the families around them are really excited to finally have a crosswalk that the kids can safely cross from one side of the street to the other because there's no sidewalk down the one side. However, part B to that is the speed limit on that road. There is a huge frustration with, I have gotten quite a few phone calls with the families that are on that street. There's something like 54 kids that are within that small area. And the parents are nervous having their kids out front on the sidewalks because people drive slow up until the sign about Jean Wilson's house, which then stops it from being a playground zone, and then they hit the gas and fly out to the golf course. And so they were wondering if there was something that council could do to further help with the slowing down of the traffic. And they had talked previously to Brad, our bylaw officer, previously before he left, just picking his brain, trying to, they just didn't know if there were any possibilities of some things that could happen, other than changing the speed limit. Were there other things that we could do? And so I talked to Jeff in regards to this. And the first step that they're going to be putting out is the, they're going to put up a speed sentry. So that is one of those big old speed machines that clock you so we can know exactly how fast councillor Ben-Gree is flying down that road. And then we'll have his cute little information and it'll send it to Jeff's people and it'll say councillor Ben-Gree, for the love, slow down, or whatever.
I just want to be clear, it doesn't identify the person. Let's be clear.
Gotta ruin it for me. Anyway, it's going to, it's going to give us information so we know that we have Billy Bob, all those other people flying down that road at this speed because we need to be aware of it before we know the next step. So we just, after talking to Jeff, we just kind of thought that that is a first step into collecting information. And so Jeff's people are charging it and getting it ready. You have people.
I have people.
They're charging it, getting it ready so that they can put it out here pretty quick, is my understanding.
Yeah, correct.
Yes. So I just wanted to report to council that this is something we need to be aware of. This is a problem and we're just seeing what we can do here.
Yeah, I appreciate that councillor. And data collection, as always, is the first step. Yeah. Councillor Coort?
Couple of thoughts. I'm wondering which side of the road they're going to put that, that machine on. If you're going, since I live on that road, I'm familiar with it. If you're going from north to south, there's already speed bumps up and down that whole thing. So if they're going on it fast, they're banging on the bottom of their cars. My bigger concern is when they come off the bypass and head north, because there are no speed bumps there, but there are a lot of cars parked on that road too. So I appreciate what councillor Brown's talking about. I think we need to slow it down there. And just as a dead end of my, yesterday or today, I noticed that Dr. Eagle Bear actually puts a little yellow sign saying kids are playing when he's out with his kids in the yard, then he takes it off when they go in the house. So there are residents that are concerned about the speed on that area.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And there are bikes around that place and kids and little trikes and you name it.
Yeah. Jeff?
To your question, when I talk to Sean, what we'll do is we'll just, we'll have it in each direction at separate times to try and have a look. The only thing we have to be aware of is the speed sentry does cause people to slow down when they see it.
And they forget.
So, but we'll see. The other thing with that street is it has a ton of off-street parking. There's a lot of people park off-street there and so it's narrowed down quite a bit. When I talked to councillor Brown, one of the things we discussed was it feels like people are speeding, but they may all be going reasonably around the speed limit. It's just a narrow street with all the off-street parking.
And I think you just nailed it right there. I don't think anybody's doing 70 on there, but there is not, there's not a lot of...
There's not a lot of margin for error either. So we'll start to collect the data and we'll see what it looks like. That's what I can offer for now.
Thank you, councillor.
Just another idea, once you collect that data, I know I've been in other communities where they actually have signs posted that there are children at play, slow down children playing, that kind of, like permanent sign on either side or down.
One of the difficulties, but I'm not suggesting we shouldn't look at it. One of the difficulties is you start putting your signage based on the demographic of who lives on the street and that changes all the time. And so they become, what's the word? They quickly become ignored as there are more, more, more of them around the community, right? So that's a trick.
Councillor Ben-Gree, councillor Coort?
I'm not opposed to speed limits, but I am opposed to limiting the speed on so many streets and avenues. In this town, if we continue to limit the speed limit, we'll be in reverse pretty soon. And we almost get a daily phone call on what is with the speed limit?
Third and fourth half.
And what is this? What is that? And I think it's a perception, being an ex-police officer, it's a perception of how fast those vehicles actually are going. And like you said, it's a narrow street, the parking on both sides. And people are aware of children playing on, particularly on that street, and they're aware of the other playground zones in, in communities. So like I said, I agree with councillor Brown and yet I have some difficulty reducing speeds all over town.
All right. Councillor Coort, councillor Brown?
Just, just a reminder, there are only two, three, through, through streets in town, Main Street and Seventh Street. And so we do get a bit more traffic on that road because it's the one that goes to the golf course. It's the one that goes to the agro dome if you're coming in that direction. It's the one that takes you to the bypass. So we do get a bit more traffic on there, but I don't believe there's people gunning 80 down there. And I think you were right. I think it narrows and that's why it looks like there's, and that's gonna be, and even that's scary.
Oh, if you got a child, even on the other side of the vehicle, you know the response time from coming up behind a vehicle isn't sufficient if you have a child that comes from behind a vehicle. No question. No question about it.
There are a few other areas where there are issues, like on East Hill is Second and Fifth Avenue. That's another one. The minute I turned a corner in the winter, more than once, I missed, I missed the corner and land on my front yard because the slip on the ice. So there are different areas where there are issues. But that one in particular is one. Councillor Brown?
I think the most important thing we have to remember here is we're, it only takes one.
Exactly.
It only takes one child to be hit. It only takes just once. And so, yes, you could say, well, that can happen on any road. Well, that's true. But for us as council, to have something brought to council with a community, which is that street, those people getting a hold of us to say, this is a problem. Are they requesting that we take the speed limit down to turtle speed? No, that's not the request. The request is, we're concerned. What can you do? They're trying to be as proactive as they can without throwing nails down, right? They're, they're just trying. They really want their kids' safety. That is the utmost importance.
Okay. Councillor Ben-Gree, and then we need to move on.
I just have one other short comment to after him with that.
Jeff, have we ever asked Sean to go up there and monitor the speed?
We haven't specifically gone on Seventh, but again, when we start using the speed sentry and it's, there'll be some more awareness to it, certainly, but we haven't focused on that street in my, my recollection.
I'd suggest that we ask Sean to go up there and monitor the speed for...
Well, that's what the sentry will do for us, right?
It's a sentry. It's a speed sentry. That's what it does.
Yeah. Yeah, we download the data and...
This is a bit of a personal item. My daughter moved here a year and a half ago. She specifically bought Peter Drew's house off Seventh Street. She looked at the house at Seventh Street and she looked at Peter's and said, there's too much traffic on Seventh. So it is a bit of a concern.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So you made a point. Thank you so much. We shall look into it. There will be some data collection that will be a good start. And thank you councillor Brown for taking that to heart because, yes, we need to be the mouthpiece for the citizens that, of this community is important. 7B, recommendation from CCW, local improvement tax. Do you want councillor?
I move to ratify the recommendation made in CCW to approach the property owners on home seekers regarding local improvement tax and also acquire statistics on the usage of the road.
Right. Thank you. So regarding the latter part of your motion, 7D will address that.
Talk about some of that.
So comments? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. We have B. Councillor Brown, you had made that recommendation. Do you want to go ahead and put a motion forward regarding public engagement and councillors go in a community? Go ahead.
You just said it, but...
Oh, no. That's your, that's your motion. I'm just making sure that people are aware.
I'm on it. I move to recommend...
You can take the recommend out.
Perfect. To council, to set the date for the councillors to go out to the community, to engage the public regarding our strategic plan.
Okay. Perfect. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. 7C, business arising from delegation. So we had J D do a very good presentation. Councillor South, is there anything that you want to propose, bring forward? Data collection? Do you want us to maybe start to look at the Moses Lake studies that was done and then add to that regarding low-cost housing?
Yes. I think, actually, J D, I hat tip to you for the good work you did on that presentation because you encapsulated that whole ARDN thing beautifully. I just want to make sure that we have the information that we need and if that means gleaning some from Moses Lake, plus determining what we have for homelessness and/or people who are couch diving because they have no place to sleep.
Jeff?
That way we have something. We have data.
So I'd request a motion to council to direct administration to participate in Phase Two of the homelessness estimation project. And we'll get that application by the end of the month if that, if that's approved.
Councillor South? Okay. So the motion is...
Administration.
What Jeff said.
To direct. Did you get it?
Okay. I'll move that we direct administration to participate in the, whatever Jeff said.
Phase Two of the...
Estimation project?
Yes.
Yeah. Homelessness estimation project. Yes.
ARDN.
Yeah. That too.
We'll help you.
All right.
I love that collective motion.
Yeah.
Feels good.
Would be best if we could do it. Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. And J D, once again, thank you for the good work. Councillor Ben-Gree?
I'm ready to address this.
Okay. All right. Okay. Regarding the second item, I can see Mrs. Jensen is patiently waiting. So councillor Ben-Gree?
I'll make a motion to recommend to, no, a motion to have administration look into donating two flower planters for the front of the senior citizen center.
Two, two flower barrels. That's what I really want. It's a little bit bigger than a plant.
Not to look into, but to do it.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then councillors?
Yes.
All right. Okay. So in other words, Jeff will have the pleasure to find himself a little pocket of dollars somewhere. So all in favor? Thank you. You got your barrels.
Mentioned that it's a donation, come out of the donation.
Yeah. This is...
Not, not senior citizens' cost.
Oh, gosh, no.
We'll cover it.
Okay.
Do we have any money left in the community enhancement program?
We'll just, we'll just take it out of parks budget. I'll tell Randy tomorrow.
I mean, Randy will only love us.
He will. Mercy will. We'll make it work.
Okay, thank you so much. And Mena, if you want to stay, you're welcome, if you want to go, you're welcome.
Well, this is quite entertaining, I think I'll stay.
Oh, all right, gosh, we didn't know we had that effect. We wish we had more people that could be entertained. Okay, all right, let's go on the eight committee and others report.
Homeseekers?
Oh geez, seven D, Homeseekers, absolutely, thank you. That's why I have a deputy.
I just wanted to, following up from our last meeting, we created a schedule, trying to think about how to best capture the data on the, the traffic on Homeseekers. We created a schedule that will go over five weeks. And we're trying to have some redundancy in the data we capture, so that we're not just maybe capturing a super slow time or a super busy time. What we've proposed is that over the next, well, we wouldn't start till near the end of the month, but over five weeks, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we would have, we would have a four-hour shift, two different times over those five weeks. So two Mondays, two Wednesdays, two Fridays, over the course of the project. And then three Tuesdays, three Thursdays, three Saturdays shifts, because those are the transfer station days as well. And we know that that increases some traffic. And then we've, we've, we've moved the, the shifts around so that each day has a morning and an evening shift of four hours apiece. And the theory there is we would simply create a spreadsheet for the employee and they would observe the volume and the nature of the traffic. So of course, we want to know if it's heavy truck, if it's truck and trailer, if it's passenger car. We also want to know if we can observe them pulling into a residence there. So now that's local traffic versus through traffic, because we think that's going to be an important piece, too. How we propose to staff it, I was gonna make a joke, say it'll be all on the intern, but we won't do that to JD. He might have a shift or two, I won't, I won't discount that. But we have a number of our, our youth seasonal staff who are always looking for a few extra hours here and there. And so, to, to be frank, they're the least expensive labor. And they're always looking to pick up four hours in a week or a few extra hours. So we thought we'd put it out to the seasonal staff to say, if any of you want to pick up an extra shift, and as long as it keeps them under any overtime requirements on forty-four a week, that's one of the other reasons it's in four-hour chunks, because they can work eight hours a day for five days, plus an additional four-hour shift without overtime implications. And we put it out to them and let them start to sign their name on the certain days. And as long as they all gathered it by the same methodology, then we should have good data. So we do a little training. So that's our proposal, intending to conclude by the twenty-second of July is when that would be gathered. And then we can report back to council in the August council meeting what the data will look like. The budget, if you take all those four-hour shifts over all those days, it's approximately a thousand dollars. My proposal is that we cover that council-approved, what you called council priorities operational funding. And so it's a, it's a pretty small amount, it won't impact that budget line very much at all. And it's my proposal that we would take it out of there, because that's already some approved money. So that's what I have to present on Homeseekers, if that's acceptable to you.
Thank you. I think that's a, a good plan that you presented. Now let's see what council feels about it.
I was thinking, if you made a, a graph sheet with all those little things and can check them off.
Yep.
So that it would be consistent with everybody, they'd all have the same data.
Yeah, correct, we, they all have the exact same table for every shift.
Okay. Counselor, anybody else?
By the way, we intend to start on the twentieth, by the way, just so you know, of June.
The twentieth of June?
Of June, yeah.
All right, so there is something that perks my interest in what you're doing, is that you're not getting outside labor. You're using the labor that we have in place, youth especially, who is so badly in need of money.
And some of those kids aren't getting a full forty hours now, right?
And says, I started late in the season, a lot of them, and then in money. So it kinda, it kinda serves, serves maybe two purposes. Counselor Brown, Counselor Kurt?
I just wanted to put the motion forward to approve it. Did you want to have his question first?
Okay, you can put the motion and we can have the questions, fine.
So I, I put the motion forward that we, that we hire.
Youth?
Yeah, I know. Do we need to include that though?
I think you could just say, just to proceed with the data gathering for Homeseekers, I think would be fine.
I make a motion to approve, to proceed with the information gathering on Homeseekers Avenue and that the funding for it will come out of our.
Your council priorities, it's called in the budget, yeah.
Account.
Yeah. All right, we have questions, question?
Just to muddy the water a little bit, so we find, that was no pun, by the way. We find that there's a bit of an increase in traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Are we prepared as a council to dump three or four hundred thousand dollars onto that road if we find out that there's a little more traffic than we thought?
Okay.
That's my only concern.
So that is a fair, and fair and valid, a question, but you won't be able to go there unless you have the data collection. So it's always the same story, what comes first?
Even if we do have the data collection, are we still gonna put any money into that road?
We will have to then look at all the possibilities and then decide if that is a benefit to the community or if it is not. Okay, yes.
Jeff, is this the first time that we've ever used the urban development or whatever this project goes under?
No, that's council priorities.
Oh, you used like forty-something thousand dollars from that account last year. And we're funding the trade corridor portion with it this year. That's what the bulk of that budget's for.
But this is the first time that we've had residents look at.
Are you talking about local improvement tax?
Yes, local improvement.
Oh, oh, okay. So I think that's still premature, I don't think we're there yet.
No.
We just want to be able to present them with good data, too.
Yeah.
That's why one, just, just so you know, for one thing, I didn't, I don't really want to disclose all the dates now because I don't want anyone running a campaign to call their friends and family to go hauling down that road. So, yeah, Merna uses that road, so we won't tell her either. Except the twentieth is kind of out of the bag, so anyway, that, that one slipped out. But all the rest, we're just gonna have somebody, we'll probably talk to a couple of the landowners if we can park in their approach and spend our time there and do that.
Counselor Barnes, uh, Counselor Drew and Counselor Barnes, sorry.
I just wanted a question about that Homeseekers Avenue. When that was developed, did we have an agreement of any kind?
No.
Where our services, town services to their lots, that kind of stuff? And was there a road agreed to back, way back when?
Good question. So my guess is we do have development agreements on those properties, because again, there would have been utility connections and potentially easements and a number of those things. But I will, I will make a note to look if there's any implications in those for the road. I don't think there is, by the way, I don't think there is. But I will certainly have Nolan look at the development agreements on those properties in case there is some type of obligation on the road. But we're pretty good, well, historically, we've been pretty good about any of what we call off-site costs have been associated by way of caveat to those properties. So they're usually easily identified, and I'm not aware of any on those properties. For example, if you bought a lot on Seventh Street right now, there are off-site costs for the costs of the road due to the town at the time of sale. As an example, but that doesn't exist to my knowledge on Homeseekers.
Counselor Drew, last time when, when Andy's train came, I asked that question. And the question, the answer to the question was, when he bought those ten acres of land for a very low price to us today, there was no roads, there was a path that over the year was dug on the side to make ditches. The deposit of that earth was then put on the top of that path, flattened up. And over the year, gravel went in it and more dirt. And every time the rain came, they added some kind of filler of some sort. But there is no true base of a road. And I never paid any local improvement tax because I asked that specifically.
It was, it was their choice to live there, and that's what they decided.
Exactly.
I guess that's.
That's correct. They didn't really realize that in time, that little path is becoming a thoroughfare. That never was the intent.
So this question to Jeff. When we look at what we did to improve Twelfth, Twelfth Street.
Yeah.
What was the base underneath that like? I mean, wasn't that a dirt path one time as well? Or was there an actual rock base underneath that? Because we put, we spent some money, a hundred thousand bucks a few years ago to coat the top of that, and it seems to have worked for. But if we put the same type of thing on that road, would it just break out, break down?
Pretty quickly, is the, is the estimation, yeah.
It was done.
But confusing with Tenth Street as well, because Tenth Street was about the same kind of thing, right?
Yeah.
It just kind of just appeared over time. Twelfth Street's actually got a base, Tenth Street doesn't.
I would say Tenth Street's probably an inferior road base. I don't think it's very good.
Counselor Bangu?
If I remember right, Counselor Barnes, Twelfth Street did have a base, but it didn't have the, the large boulders compacted in. But it had, it had large-sized stones. But it was never compacted down and built up like a, a road should be done. So they had the, they had the initial road.
Need to go looking for grants?
Not yet. So I think you have a question on the table, don't you?
Yeah, just what I was saying.
Just make sure I can remember how that transpired.
Seems to me that we have a lengthy discussion and we, we have a, a motion that, so.
Yeah, that's right.
So the motion was to carry on with.
Collection data.
Collection data.
Yeah.
And coming out of council priorities for the financing. So all in favor? Thank you very much, so this will move on. All right. Under eight A, April two thousand twenty financial report. Any questions?
Yes.
Counselor Bangu?
Jeff, I noticed on our expense sheet that you give us, we're still having some charges against the airport. What, what's happened there, forty-eight ninety?
Yeah, well, maintenance.
So right now, it's still our baby, nothing's changed, so nothing's been formalized. So any expenses that would normally be accrued are, are on us. I'm just trying to, oh, there it is, right there, yeah.
We're still covering the insurance and.
Everything we normally have is still ours, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, utilities, insurance, upkeep, everything's on us, yeah.
Until the other is.
Until we have the paper signed and the transfer done to the county, unfortunately, we pay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Thank you for picking that up. All right, so this is for your information, as you know. Under ten, correspondents. So here is an interesting letter. Ten A, Cartston Skating Club, if you remember, Counselor Silk, if I remember, had suggested that if people want change, I have to come up with a little bit of money. So here's a thousand-dollar donation, is not covering everything, but it's a good start and we are appreciative. And we should possibly send a thank you letter, so, but we need a recommendation for that.
A resolution.
Move to direct.
A resolution, sorry.
I move to direct administration to send a letter of appreciation to the Cartston Skating Club for their donation to the ring.
Thank you so much. All in favor? Thank you. Under ten B, Concrete Alberta, as you can see in this COVID-nineteen kind of situation, the big players on the scene really need to get people moving and doing big, big project. But in our town, it's difficult to see a project where we could fit in.
Fills our concrete, man.
Yeah. Ten B, ten C, Mr. Abe Tini?
Abe Tini.
Abe Tini, yeah. Could you maybe, Counselor Silk, talk about this? Oh, that's pretty well all what is there is there, but.
No, Abe's just outlined the, the, sort of the founding documents for the Chief Mountain Regional Solid Waste Commission, who's on the board as terms of directors and all of the different, I guess. I don't know how to put it, but all the things that we need to do to follow the guidelines that have been put forward by the province, so.
So thank you so much for being on that board. You are officially with ministerial letter on that board.
The garbage guy on council.
He likes to dump trash.
Yes, but Counselor Silk, can I ask you a question? There is mention in the report that, I mean, in his report, that there was a serious incident in one of the transfer stations. Do you want to enlighten us a little bit as to the reputation financially to us all? Because that seems to me a very serious matter.
Yeah, so there was a pickup at a transfer station and unbeknownst to the driver, there were hot ashes inside the stuff that he picked up. And then, of course, he takes it out to the landfill, leaves it overnight, and the trailer burns to the ground. So, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's late, and so he just parks it rather than unloading it. And so that's why we have the items that were brought up by Abe about we will no longer accept any sort of like burned trash unless we're a hundred percent certain that it is put out. So if there are people bringing in burning barrels and they, if there's any question about them, whether it's, there's still hot embers in there, they'll be asked to put it on the wood pile.
Can you help me understand the story, why the insurance wouldn't cover?
Appreciation on the trailer. The trailer, to get a new one is a hundred thousand dollars or more, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And what the insurance company will assess the value of that trailer because it's.
Depreciated.
It's the oldest trailer in the fleet, so it's not worth much, so.
All right, so.
All of us are gonna make up the difference in terms of.
So together, we're going to participate in that replacement. One more question, and then Counselor Barnes. Regarding the KINI membership, are we any further ahead in knowing the disposition?
That's a good question there. Right now, the board has directed the executive director to meet with KINI. Because KINI is a little, they're up in the air right now, because they have taken on a contract with, I can't remember if it's BFI or whoever, to do a lot of their pickup. And so we're trying to work out, so how does that affect us? You know, what are you, what are your expectations? Because there's still going to be need for us to transport some of their stuff, some of the garbage. And we still have residents from the Blood Reserve that use our transfer station and so on. So that's a little unclear right now until Abe has a chance to meet with the administration on the reserve.
Okay, thank you for that update. Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, I was just wondering, what's the policy about the last trailer of the day? Do they always park it or, or they just say, oh, boy, it's time to go home, better just do that in the morning? I mean, it would have been avoided if that had have been dumped, but I'm just trying to figure out why that wouldn't have been dumped at the end. It's still part of a day's work.
Problem is, is that they're coming in at seven, eight o'clock at night, and you can't just dump the trash, you gotta bury it, too. So then they dump it, then they gotta get out the cat or the loader, and then they gotta bury it all, and so.
All at the same time, eh?
So the idea is that if you've got just a truck full of regular trash, opposed to hot trash, then it's not an issue. You pull in the yard, you leave the truck, you dump it in the morning, it's buried and away they go.
Yeah.
All right.
It's unfortunate.
It's very unfortunate, it's a costly requisition coming up, okay. Under ten D, Alberta Association of Police Governance, there is AGM details, and you could see there's an awful lot of papers there. I know, Counselor Bangu, that you're always interested in anything like that. So there is a Zoom conference, AGM, kind of.
Twenty-second.
They were supposed to have it in Brooks, but they're not.
Right.
And so it's going to be on Zoom.
So on Zoom.
I'm not so sure if the town registers you or if you register yourself.
I've been registered and I've got all the details.
Okay, perfect.
They cut down a tree if they handed out all the information to everybody.
Totally, I agree. Thank you. And so under ten E, that's another, Counselor Silk, item. South Grove is having their AGM on Zoom also. You're all invited. Who is invited? Because normally, in, when they used to have their AGM, there used to be the person representing the town plus one invite. So what's, what's this one?
I think where it's virtual.
It makes no difference, as many.
There's no.
As many as want to be there can be there. So do you register yourself or how does it go?
I think if you, if you're incredibly interested, you could probably get Angel to register you.
Okay, so I'm.